All right, I'm gonna turn on recording. So we've got this. So quick things that we're gonna go over here today. We're gonna talk about membership renewals. We're gonna talk about fall conference. Hopefully, we're gonna have a little bit of legislative update. I haven't seen my legislative folks yet. We're gonna talk about our survey tracking tool and what we need from you there. And then pretty much, we just want to open up it for questions. And tell us what, share with us what you guys are going through and how we can help you there. Let's see, Carleen. So, so the quick initial thing is membership dues renewal. So you probably have got notices on that. If you have any questions, you have some reason, well, I'm not sure I want to renew. Please reach out to us, reach out to our board members. Let's talk about it and find out. There's a lot of things we've been working on. We definitely need your support. So you should have received emails, even a statement in via mail if you haven't already. So just a quick update on that. The next big thing that we have coming up, we've got some smaller training sessions coming up here, but our next big thing is our fall conference. And our fall conference can be very different this year than we've ever done before. We're working with two other groups here in town to do that. And we've got represent representation from those two groups to tell us more about the fall conference. And we'll get you for information on that. So first of all, we have Pam Silverberg, who is with the GDPR. You guys are probably familiar with GDPR. And then we also have Francis, who not only owns and runs assisted living, but also is the leader of Mavericks of Senior Living Podcast and Training. And so we've, we're collaborating with them on the fall conference. So Francis, I'll let you go first. Why don't you say a couple of words about the conference?
Absolutely. So I really appreciate a couple of minutes here. I think I've met some of you and obviously not in person. It's been a while. But part of our big push this year, I know about you guys, but I run assured assisted living, which is residential care home. So definitely understand the stress that we all can be under, especially with our lovely health department. I've been surveyed three times in the last two weeks. So that's been a lot of fun. I think I might be on their shit list. Excuse my language because I have a couple contentious issues with them right now that I'm not happy about. But a lot of what we wanted to do here was kind of shake it up. After coming out of COVID, I've been cooked mentally, physically myself, you know, kind of gotten our own ways with our heads down and trying to just survive right for the last 14, 15 months. And so a lot of what we wanted to do was shake it up, bring some energy back in a positive way that we really kind of learn from each other, right? Learn from the different walks that we have in this senior care journey. Whether it's the case managers, the placement agents, you know, the skilled nursing providers, the nurses, the doctors, we really wanted to get it so we understand each other's pain points and how we can solve those collectively to what benefits everybody, right? Is good census, great care, great staff retention, right? And so what we want to do here is, is have tracks and education, which I'll let Pam dive deeper on in a second of learning how we can do better operations because of what we learned from other people outside of our little track that we're on. Because I know for me, I can kind of get my head down worrying about like staying within the regs and trying to get this here, then all of a sudden we gotta worry about staff. And so our main idea here is to cross each other over so that we're no longer just in our track as administrators, owners, operators, whatever title we want to call ourselves. But we're turning into this collective care group that we are bettering aging for our residents and also for our care teams.
Awesome. Thank you, Francis. Pam?
I was gonna say Pam, dive deep into our kind of education. You guys have been busting your tail on.
Um, I was gonna concentrate more today on, you know, we, we have a four different tracks that are gonna happen. But we also were trying to make sure that the Cala members get what they've, what they've always gotten. And you know, we're, we're trying, we're gonna get D Rita there. Nicole, you tell me, I think we have D Rita. We also want, for me this time, and it's been really affected with GDPR is, is having our members come together with questions and, and having, sharing that with the state or the, we're gonna have an embusman too. So we'll have the embusman and the state, we're hoping we can get them both on the same panel. Cause I know you guys feel like the punching bag sometimes between the, the two, the two agencies. But put some questions together that you guys have that you wish that scenarios that are happening that you wish that you could get answered. We're gonna do a conflict resolution between facilities have it with families. You have it with the state between family members, just a breakout session on conflict resolution, have a presentation. So we're doing the first half. So the first day we're doing, having Louis Gravant, so it was important to us to lighten the mood. He's, he's great. He's funny. He's all about service as a superpower and getting back to why you all got into this. Because your heart is in the right place, but you've just been so knocked down by tasks and COVID and state. So it's, it's, it's about lightening the load. Also bringing TIPA on, we specifically chose a topic about humor and how TIPA brings humor. But we're also trying to bring the nuts and bolts to it too. Nicole, you've been on the calls too. So I don't know. Do you want to add anything to this?
Well, what I can say from Colas perspective is it's been one of the most enjoyable collaborations in this industry that I've been a part of so far. I mean, really working with Francis and his group and Pam and his group, it's just been completely exciting. I feel like we've cut, touched all the bases, you know, bringing Louis in, he used to work for Disney. And I mean, he's got an energy and it's exciting and really does kind of have a way to create an experience that I think we want to create for employees and our clients. Bring in Tiba Snow in, I mean, again, offering trainings with her. We all know how vital and important what we learned from her is. But as well, I think what we've noticed and even through this process of the three of us as associations is we all struggle with a lot of the same things. And therefore there is power in numbers and coming together to break down some of the walls, even though sometimes we can be competitors. How important it is for all of us to come together and advocate for our industry, whether it is through with the health department legislation, regardless of what it, what it is. And also, so we all can get on that same page and support each other and work better as a team to support our families and our clients. I feel like this is gonna be a great, great, great conference. Should check all the boxes for Cola with updating you from the survey. You know, new survey process and the most common efficiencies, but also we've been listening. We've heard the struggles that we're having with what we're being told by the embusman's office and what we're being told by the health department. We hear the struggles we're all having with staffing. You know, maybe dealing with difficult families, dealing with difficult residents, difficult discharges and admissions. I mean, it's just been such a great collaboration. And I also think it's really gonna get us out of our box, our box. And kind of like Francis said, our tunnel vision and really gonna learn things that we didn't even think might be able to help our business. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. And it's just been nothing but a pleasure working with the other two associations.
If you don't mind real quick here is we're gonna have an emerging room for technology. We know technology can be both a blessing and a curse in our industry, right? And so we wanted a space that people can actually feel and touch it, see what it actually is. And so it's not this idea of seeing a demo on a computer or anything like that. It's actually having vendors there that are really gonna let you immerse in that technology to really see, does it do the things we need it to do? And/or does it add more work, right? So we want to get this idea that, you know, tech can be a great way for us to augment what we're doing. As long as it reduces our workload in some capacity, right? And that's why we're having Ryan, the robot there as well too, which is gonna be really exciting from DU, the companion robot as well. So we are gonna have a little bit of very big dedication to some technology and emerging technology, hopefully for the aging space and aging services as well. And Peter, that's all we have.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for that. Again, I put the link to the conference website in the chat. And we'll be following up with some emails to you guys as well with discounts for column members to sign up for that. This fall. Look for more. All right. We want to do a quick legislative update and I believe we got Tamara and Eileen here. Guys want to give us a little bit of update what we've been working on and where we're going?
Hi. So um, I don't have a whole lot other than for those of you who didn't know, we, we had attempted to propose a bill. This last session, it was a late bill, really working on trying to more clearly define the differences of smaller assisted living. And where some of the regulations were still pretty onerous and over, overreaching for us. And unfortunately that got slammed before we really even had a chance to defend it. And it didn't get to the table because it was so late in the session. So given that, and then based on the recent unfortunate situation of home instead and their whole issue with care and the newscasting, I think it's home instead. Anyway.
Almost, it's almost like home.
Just like home, almost like home. Sorry. So with that, and then Senator Danielson's response to that, as far as how there needed to be more regulation and more fines and more of all of this, we are really working on stopping that before it gets started and not letting that gain any more traction. So tentatively, and I'm working on trying to get that rescheduled, we are trying to meet with them on the 27th of July, as well as with Senator Genal to try to have some discussions about how we can increase the accountability of the industry through education and training and, and kind of being at the forefront rather than trying to be reactive and, and trying to deal with stuff with a punitive response as opposed to, you know, we can talk, for example, we can talk about all of the, the policies that are out there and all the regulations that address policies. But unless those things are in operation, they're just on paper. And, and that's what they're finding is that policies may be there, but no one's operationalizing those. And so how is adding regulation or fines going to improve the situation? So that's just kind of the overview. And so we're looking forward going into the next session with having a little bit more guidance. And I think the collaborative effort, I'm excited about that, working with GDPR and, and assured home care with this conference and really good thing. I'm feeling really good about it likewise, as Nicole said. But I also think it's a way for us to come together on kind of working with legislation that makes sense. Moving forward as well. Eileen, do you have more?
Oh, I was just gonna add that Senator Genal has actually gone ahead and filed the bill title for our bill for January 22. So I know that she's anxious to get started on that. But as with all the legislators, they all pretty much take the month after the session off. And then you could really deal with them a month later. So that's kind of, hopefully very soon we'll be able to start meeting with her regularly and kind of iron out some of the positive and negative of what we worked on last year.
I just wanted to jump in really quick, guys, because we did talk about that today and Nicole wasn't able to be at our education committee meeting today, but we talked about adding a legislative, getting legislators there. Let's, I'm not saying that right. It's been a long day already. Getting them there on a panel so they can start to hear from us and not, not just, you know, get these news clips of, you know, people that have made maybe egregious mistakes, but mistakes. I mean, everybody is trying to do the right thing. And I think it's important to get them there and have them part of the conversation.
Do you have, do you have space in your agenda?
Do we?
Yeah. Cause I could probably help you initiate some invitations if you need me to.
Awesome. Yeah, I can't, maybe you could put your phone number in the, the chat.
Yeah, we can help you get connected to Eileen, Pam.
Thank you. It's so amazing. It's wonderful that Senator Genal has been, she believes in our industry. She's been a huge support of all of us. So it's been great that she's been willing to work with us and trying to make changes and, and getting some leeway. And always now we're working towards 2022. That's, that's huge. So just keep that in mind in the industry.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate that. The next thing I want to talk about real quickly here is our survey tracking tool. So what we're putting together is our own database and feedback from our members in the industry. So we can begin to track what are common issues that we see in the survey process to see if we can't begin to build our own data and be able to really give feedback to give feedback to CDPH on what we're seeing from our side. So it's not just coming from their side. So I want to share with you guys how you get to this form to even fill this out. And hopefully you guys have been to the website. We did some big updates there. So updated some colors and design on that. Where we have this is under our resources tab, we have the survey tracking tool form. So when you go to that, it's gonna, you just click on that, it's gonna take you to the form. And it's gonna collect some basic data. So we're asking for your name and that kind of stuff. It's optional though. You don't have to put that in there. If you feel like you want to keep that anonymous, just don't put your facility name in there. What we do need to know is number of beds, data survey, what are the tags? Description, who did your survey? How is it gonna be resolved? And was there a cost to do that? And was that cost either a one-time cost or an ongoing cost that you had to do? So we'll start to collect this data as we get more of that, we'll be able to share that with our members to let them know. As we see common solutions to common problems, we'll be able to share that with you because we're collecting that from our membership. And we know that those are the ways that the state is allowing things to be resolved. So that is how you get to that. If you haven't done that recently, please do that. If you get the tidbit Tuesday email, we've got a big, big blue banner at the bottom of that email that links to this as well, just as a reminder. So you should see that in your email every Tuesday. Just as a reminder of that survey tracking tool to know that that's available and out there. And we want to get that feedback from you guys. All right. Um, I know there was one other category of things we wanted to talk about Nicole, but I think we can just generally open it up to questions and whatever else you want to address. So let's hear from you guys. What's going on with you individually? How can we help you, support you? Challenges, successes, whatever it is.
I would like to add that we were on the phone with CDPH last week. They've only done, I believe, 26 relicensor surveys. They are still very much backlog with revisits and complaints. So they really have not done a lot of relicensor surveys. And so just kind of want to give everybody a little bit of a heads up on that. And I kind of also wanted to put it out there. If you guys have any input, we're all kind of in a weird situation, you know, with the fact that we've got a lot of new owners that are coming in that don't know what they're doing. And they're buying up multiple homes and they really aren't caring that much about what is going on in their houses. So, you know, for them to get a $2,000 fine, they don't care. So I'm trying to figure out if any of you guys have ideas on how we can, the people that are coming in and buying up a lot of multiple homes that really aren't very knowledgeable in this industry. How is the best way to hold them accountable? Or should it always be the administrator? I'm just trying to get some feedback on where we can go with the state on this, on who is actually accountable. And how do we weed out those other people? And how do we make sure that they've got the proper training? So I don't, I'd like to hear from you guys, what your thoughts are on that.
All right.
I did type this in the chat, but just to kind of dovetail off of what Janelle had mentioned. We, we do have a locked in time every other week with the health department. We have D Rita, Cheryl, Elaine, and we also have Peter Myers from the strike force. So we usually give them an agenda a couple of days before. But we would love, if you guys have any questions directly about a regulation, something going on with, you know, infection prevention, please, please, please get that question to us through the Cola website. And we will ask it directly to them and then we will get you the answer. Or sometimes we'll give you the answer. And if it's something we're all learning, we'll also use what we learned as a tidbit Tuesday. So, um, you know, please let us know. We've got their ears. And, and we love to fill up their time with getting one-on-one answers regarding specific incidences that you guys might be struggling with.
And Janelle, I think Francis probably jumped off, so he may not be here still to do that. Ginger says, Janelle, an idea is can you invite them to participate in some sort of mentorship with current owners and admin?
We, we we have done that. And what we were told, we get a little bit of mixed responses with that. It's kind of like, sometimes it's like, we're, you know, really not responsible for the training. That's why our training is so intense. But we have also heard that they want to get more involved with training on the ALAC side of this. And that's one place where our voices can really be heard are on those ALAC committee meetings. I mean, we've got D Rita on there, people that can get on those meetings and voice your opinions, whether it's about surveys or questions. You have got this, you know, you've got that, you've got their ear right there. You've got an ear to express yourself. And so I think it's really, that's would be a good place to bring this up. We have brought it up. And I don't know, Nicole, I've kind of felt that we've gotten mixed, you know, we've gotten kind of mixed comments when we've talked about more training. How are you feeling about that?
I think it's a slippery slope because we never want to be overregulated or have so much training that it's onerous and exhausting. So it's been kind of a slippery slope in regards to, you know, the best way to approach it. You know, the new administrators class definitely has more hours. But we are seeing a different perspective for individuals that step into this industry because their investors separated from individuals that are actually owners and operators and administrators and boots on the ground, day in and day out. And so how do we wrap our arms around those investors? Because ultimately we don't want our industry to start to get a bad rap because maybe, um, you know, new administrators are missing some things. Maybe they're not as engaged in their buildings. So you know, I, I think that's the slippery slope we're on is we don't want people to be overeducated or have to pay a lot of money to get in the industry. But you know, we are starting to see some issues for sure.
And Megan brought up something that's something we can get into. I mean, we're still dealing with COVID and regulations around that. So what are you guys still dealing with in your communities? What are some challenges? Yeah. Go ahead, Tamara.
So just kind of tapping onto what Nicole was saying, you know, for example, one of the things that Senator Danielson was talking about was really regarding the administrator training and that all administrators should have a degree, a bachelor's degree in healthcare administration or something like that. And, and really where, where one of the responses to that from our standpoint is, well, how does, how does having a degree ensure that there's increased quality of care? Again, that operationalizing of policies. And, you know, and talking about these investors that are coming into our industry because they see it as a cash cow. You know, everybody is now applying for 12 to 16 beds. There's really not that many new eight bed facilities coming on board. Cause as we all know, the, the viability of that model is not any longer supportive for an, an income. You know, we've, we've had some discussion about, you know, maybe with the administrator training, maybe the administrator training needs to be a longer period of time with more hours. And actually having hands-on operational experiences rather than just trying to cram a lot of information into 40 hours. And maybe that's one way that we can look at improving the quality of the administrators and the buy-in to why does this matter? But just wanted to add that.
I would like to say that, you know, I've been with my facility for 14 years. And I've been an administrator now going on a year and a half. I feel like what makes me able to do this job is the 14 years experience that I have had. I've been put in a lot of situations, had a lot of surveyors come through. The surveyors have been in rifle. I've been expecting them anytime. I'm a little nervous because as I know how it goes, I've never been in this particular chair. So there's a lot of anticipation. Not so much. I know they're gonna find tags. I'm a little nervous about that exit interview, you know, when they finally come to you and they sit down and, and they grade you on your facility and where you're at. It's been kind of a struggle for us right now. We've been doing the weekly testing and then a Delta variants has come out. And then now we're doing testing weekly. And now we've just ordered our rapid tests. So I was wondering if anybody could kind of help me along with that of how maybe you do those rapid tests as far as where you do that in your facility. Currently we have a special room and that's where we do all of our testing for staff. But I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna do this rapid testing. And it's new to us. And I love what I do. It's been very challenging. Sometimes I say, why did I have to become an administrator? With COVID, you know, because it's something I always wanted to do. I do my best every day. I try to follow regulation and stay in compliance to the best of my ability. As far as training goes, on some of my staff meetings, what I have done is I have started to do that training in the staff meeting. So maybe one month I'll just do a regular meeting and then the next month I'll actually do a staff training. That seems to be the only way I can get the full staff trained, like on infection control, fall management, those types of things. But I'm just anticipating and waiting for a state to come to my facility. And thank you all. I'm glad that you're here for the support. But I do not agree that you need a bachelor's degree to be an administrator. I took the 40 hour course online. And I loved it. And I continue to be a part of all the webinars that I possibly can. Cause I, like I said, I am new to this. So thank you, everybody. And any feedback you can give me would be greatly appreciated.
So what we've heard, so what we've heard with the antigen test is a lot of people are having their staff do it in their cars. So they knock on the door and the outgoing, the outgoing staff gives the incoming staff the test. And there's a lot of great videos online, depending on what technology you choose to have your staff perform. They do their swab, they put it in a little card and it sits for about 15 to 20 minutes before you get a test, the result. And then obviously we're having them bring those tests back to the door to show a positive. A lot of people are having people in smaller facilities take pictures of the negative and send it to the administrator because then we have to turn around and record those on the site, depending on which technology you choose. CLIA certification is not optional at this time. If you have to do antigen testing, it's quite easy to do the application. And they get back to you within about 24 hours. And then you can request your tests to be sent out. CMS sends you $180 bill per building. That's one of the things that I've really started to work and talked to the strike force about. Maybe they can talk to the state. Maybe they can talk to the state of Colorado and let, like, if I'm the owner of a five building, small assisted living, can I only pay for one CLIA waiver instead of five CLIA waivers or 10 CLIA waivers, depending on how many small buildings I have? So we are working on that. It doesn't seem like CMS cares either way, though they're the ones that'll be collecting the $180, $180 is for two years. Well, that's how we've heard people handling it. Because the health department doesn't want them passing through the building to go to a room. And they also don't want them to be in a room with other people that potentially if they are COVID positive, they could be sharing, you know, and contaminating other people with that as well.
I think there's a lot of questions with the Western slope. And if any of you guys in the Western slope can add any additional information right now, because really it's a matter of time before. Hopefully it doesn't, but it's just a matter of time before a lot of us have to incorporate this into our own facilities. Cause I sat in on a meeting on, was it Friday morning? And they discussed like how to fill the form out and there's another meeting happening tomorrow in case anybody wants to know. Um, and there are some good questions on the side here where the people who are, so are you guys testing your unvaccinated or you're vaccinated? Is it, or if you have an outbreak, what does that look like right now?
Well, we haven't had an outbreak in the facility so far. We're testing all staff right now, weekly. Our residents are still going out into the community. So those that go out into the community, we test those residents weekly to make sure that they're okay. So that's how we're working it right now. So I don't know, maybe my staff could, you know, we have a front porch and maybe they could come up to the front porch and stand on the porch and do their tests there, you know, quickly before they come into the building and make sure that it's, it's that way. But so far we've been, been really fortunate. In the beginning, we had a couple of staff that did test positive, but we went through protocol, did all that kind of stuff. But, but really we've been, just been really fortunate right now that we haven't had that outbreak. So.
So with your little kids that you test, they said it, it takes 15 to 17 minutes to test. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So what's, and I, I understand that you also need to have biohazard to, to remove or dispose of that material, correct?
Correct.
And I know a lot of us, small places don't have any of those things in place for biohazard. So I'm just curious how people are handling that in the communities.
We go through stereo cycle is who we use and they, they give us all of our biohazard stuff and they will also come and take that away for us here at the chateau.
So are you guys paying your staff as they wait for their testing? How is that overlap?
We haven't started the testing yet. I'm waiting for the test to come in.
Oh, okay.
So we've just, you know, done the nasal swabs up to now, but now then they get an email saying, hey, you know, now that the Delta variants is out there, this is what we want you to do. Now I've been vaccinated. I have 18 staff members. Seven out of my 18 staff members received the vaccination. Friday at the staff meeting, the, the health department actually called me. And so she will be coming into my staff meeting to promote the vaccine on behalf of my staff, which I hope really helps out. I wish I was a hundred percent. I'd had no qualm at all about getting it. All my residents are vaccinated with the families, the families that have been vaccinated. What we have done is we have requested that they give us a copy of their vaccine card, which we have in our COVID book. So then that way we can track, you know, who can get visitors, who can't get visitors, that type of stuff. But this new rapid test is, I think the porch would probably work best. I don't really want them to go to the car. I would like to be able, and I get here before most of my staff anyway. I would like to be able to have them take it and then go from there and just kind of know where I'm at right away if I possibly can.
I think Stacy, what you're going through is what a lot of people are going through right now with trying to get this process in place and the safety. And it, I mean, I think for a lot of us, the uncertainty is definitely a stressor for all of us, especially as the fall gets closer. And what our staff, I, I'm like you, and I think many of us also where we're not a hundred percent. I, I'm dealing with my staff as well with trying to educate and promote. But I mean, you can't, I mean, you can only say so much and educate and hope for the best and, you know, hope, and hoping that people are kind of staying as safe as they can.
Stacy, what are they charging you for your biohazard removal? Is it a free service or what are they charging you?
You know, that just depends. I haven't had to use it a whole lot lately. So probably the more services when they're actually coming to take this away, my bill will probably go up. But it's really not that bad right now. I mean, but of course all they're taking care of is our sharps containers. Then any supplies I need on the biohazard side of level of things. So, but I'm sure as, you know, they start doing more services for me that, that will go up. So, and I just want to say this and, and, you know, with state coming, one of these days, and I think to myself, one thing that I have not quit doing in my facility is wearing masks. When the residents are around each other in an activity, we, we're doing group activities, but they all wear a mask. Staff is still wearing masks all the time. The only time the resident, you know, we have a group A lunch, group B, the only time they take down their masks is during their meals. But I've never really felt comfortable getting away from that. One, I have staff that aren't vaccinated. Two, I have residents going out to the community that are vaccinated, but it, I'm hearing that, you know, even though you're vaccinated, you could get this variance. So I gotta protect everybody as a whole. And I'm so afraid when state comes, they're going to say, why are your residents wearing masks still? They've all been vaccinated. What the, and it personally, I guess it's just my preference. I want to protect everybody as a whole, including myself. So we just never really totally quit wearing our masks yet at this point in time. It just is our, my comfort zone and the residents really don't mind doing it because they're explained to at resident council and stuff like that, the reason why, and they are actually in compliance to that right now.
I don't think the state will give you a hard time about it.
No, I don't think so.
I wouldn't worry about that at all.
You're doing more than you need to, and that's okay. I mean, whatever that level of comfort is for any of us, I think that's what we need to be pushing. So keep doing what you feel comfortable doing.
Rachel, this is Jason in West, uh, in Mesa County.
Yes.
On the Western slope.
Yes.
How are you?
Glad you could join us.
Great. And so we have, uh, we are one of the counties that are under the enhanced infection control, which does require the implementation of rapid testing on a daily basis as well as twice a week testing. And so we, we own and operate two assisted living facilities. One is a small 26-bed private pay. And the other is a 70-bed Medicaid facility, um, the Oaks assisted living. We actually just recently, within the last month and a half, announced a facility closure of the Oaks and are in process of closing that building. But with, with the new guidance, we have conducted a lot of testing. In fact, we've, we've performed over 8,000 rounds of, um, uh, not the POC antigen, but the, uh, PCR testing and are in the process of implementing the point of care rapid testing. And so what we've done is we actually set up a tent on the outside of the facility with airflow and our staff would report to the tent, uh, at the beginning of each shift. I can share with you that the system that the state provided, which is the Q health devices, it's a little bit more cumbersome to set everything up and a logistical nightmare to coordinate the testing, partly because the system was really designed for a home-based, like a parent testing their children. And it only allows either every employee to set up their own account, which then they receive their results and then would have to send the results to us. Or one person at the facility set up account and then you can test and see the results of everybody within the facility, which is ideally probably the best practice. The unfortunate side to that is the person that is set up ends up having to be the person that comes in to test everybody, which is also not possible. And so we're just still trying to figure out logistically how to implement this process. Assuming that we give all of our staff members their own account, it's not as easy as just showing up and performing a test. They have to download the app, they have to scan, uh, and sync a device every time they come. And only so many devices can be synced per account. So it's really not the ideal system. And so I'd be happy to meet with you Stacy in rifle to kind of share with you what we've done and how we've implemented it, but we also haven't been successful in fully implementing it at this time.
Now I did bring up the concern you had with that testing system, Jason, to Peter and the strike force. Because a lot of small facilities do not even have devices, like they don't even have it. You know, we don't have like an extra phone or a computer or whatever to do the, the test that has the scanning. And so they, they are offering a different type of the antigen tests that you don't have to have a device in. He's supposed to be giving me more information. As soon as I get that, I'll send it out because it really seems to me that you're right. It's almost impossible to implement this, um, if you have to do the one with the device. Because it's just, it's, it's going to be a logistical nightmare regardless of the size of your building. And so there, there's another one, I guess, that is just very simple. And there's no device needed except that you have to enter the data into a spreadsheet. Like each one of the tests, a scan code, um, that you can just type the code into the spreadsheet and who, um, took the test and the date they took the test, if it's positive or negative. So that's the one that, um, we're looking at using, even though we're not, we don't have to do it yet, but, um, I, I felt like the other thing is that the health department needed to start sending out this enhanced guidance to everyone, regardless of if you're under it or not. Because there are things that you have to be, be, start to prepare for, you know, whether it is like a tent, like you spoke to, maybe getting your CLIA certification or at least filling out your forms, knowing what that's going to look like if you have to do it. Looking at how you're going to have to change your policies and your procedures. Start to talk to your families and your staff about what it's going to look like when we all go under enhance. I mean, the chances of us all getting out of this without, you know, having to go under enhance guidances is, is minimal. I think we're all going to be there eventually. But I think we all need to prepare. So I think it's amazing, Jason, that you're sharing the things that work and don't work. And I'm sorry that you guys are the ones that are kind of going through at the beginning. We appreciate being able to learn from all the successes and even the things that are failing you so that we can get them fixed across the board.
Jason, how are the logistics with the overlapping of your staff with putting this process in place? Like, what is that looking like right now?
Well, it's, we're on a 12-hour rotation, so the, the crossover is minimal. And thankfully the enhanced recommend date or the enhanced guidance only requires unvaccinated to participate or consent to daily point of care testing. And in our facilities, we're, one of our facilities is at a hundred percent acceptance. And the other facility, uh, we have a good handful of staff that will not, uh, receive the vaccine. And so we're still continuing to provide education around the benefits. But it's still, it, the implementation has kind of, we've been halted in, in the implementation just with trying to logistically figure out how do we implement this seven days a week? Um, and we do have some situations where if we have a staff person that needs to go home in the middle of the shift and now you have an unvaccinated that shows up in the middle of the night, how are you going to test that individual? There, we did talk with our employment attorney and there were some concerns with the level of confidentiality with giving multiple people access to confidential information. And so assuming that we designated a group of staff that had access to this system, their other employees' health information could potentially be at risk, especially if you're sending out text messages with screenshots or pictures of, of test results. There's just a lot of risk associated with using this device for the, for assisted living or long-term care industry. It was really never intended for that. The other concern that I have is we, in our facility, we actually are a large, not only do we have two assisted livings, but we have a 20, 25-bed critical access hospital with a certified CLIA lab. And we actually tested this device and my lab director processed six results just as a control as well as tested it with known positive COVID. And we actually had two negative employees test positive utilizing this device. Um, and out of, I think out of six control samples, two of those were false positives and three were invalid. Meaning that we tested somebody and waited the 20 minutes for the device to air out, only to have to retest.
Wow.
And so if you're a large facility, you can only test up to six people every 20 minutes. If you have a shift change of more than six, I mean, that could cost the facility hours of time in having to conduct these tests because you do have to wait the 20-minute wait time for the results to be published. And so I do, I do know that the second test that they offer doesn't require any technology. But the, from what I've been told is the positivity rate also increases with that particular test. And so I think the struggle is as we've, we've gone through this pandemic, we've had a number of staff that we have tested that have been a false positive. And as most of you are aware, if somebody tests positive, it, it is a, it's treated as a positive and it impacts a, a large number of, uh, staff as well as residents if they were exposed to that staff member. I think the benefits of the POC is early detection and I think that is key. In Mesa County, when they implemented the enhanced infection control, it was kind of, the implementation was really mandated in a call with our local health department that we had scheduled, the state had participated in that call and had taken the call over to provide us all with verbal notice that effective immediately were required to follow the verbal requests of the state public health. At that time, they didn't have any written, uh, guidance for us. Uh, and they did quickly put together a very comprehensive set of guidelines for us to follow here in Mesa County. But after about a week, there were seven additional counties in the state that were under this effect, enhanced infection control. And as of last week, now we have 14 counties in the state that are under this enhanced infection control. So I think it really is a matter of time before other counties within the state are experiencing exactly what we're experiencing.
I know our local county has just contacted us in Larimer County, wanting to talk about this, at least open up the conversation now. And so I guess that's where we're, we're moved, we're kind of already going to have those discussions, which I'm, I'm grateful for.
I think that the biggest thing too that we need to really talk about as well is, is the N90, the N95 and fit testing. And so Jason, I was going to ask you up there in Mesa County, do you guys have N95s? Have you done fit testing? How have you guys approached that portion of the regulation? And also how have you guys approached having an infection preventivenessist to support you?
Well, one question I have Nicole too, is the N95 requirement for Medicaid-only facilities? Or is it all assisted living? This is coming from CDPH for all assisted livings. You are required to use N95 masks.
If, if you have an outbreak.
If you have an outbreak.
Uh huh. So if you have a client, yeah, go ahead.
So the N95 under the current mitigation is required for any facility that's, that has a, either an outbreak, a confirmed or suspected COVID-19. And under the enhanced guidance, uh, we are utilizing N95s in our facilities for all direct care. We recently stopped using N95s, uh, because we have nobody on isolation precaution or, and, or, uh, confirmed cases in our facility. But we did fit test all of our staff and we actually did that late in the year. When we had our first COVID positive, we actually have through our hospital, uh, fit testing capabilities to do that onsite. And actually fit tested all of our staff that have patient care.
And then are you back to the normal burn rates of PPE?
We're actually, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that we're back to normal. I think we're exhausting more PPE and, and part of that is just with the, the heat. Those masks are becoming soiled much quicker than what they were during the, the cooler temps. And so that has been problematic as well. And that had kind of helped with our decision to not use N95s across the board. We had implemented N95s whether, regardless of whether or not we had a suspected or confirmed COVID. But at this time, we're reserving our N95s for. Um, but at this time, we're reserving our N ninety-fives for either confirmed or suspected. And we're just using hospital-grade masks for anything other than confirmed. Our residents are also encouraged under infection, the enhanced, to wear masks. And most of our residents have been in compliance with the exception to our memory care setting. That one's a little bit more difficult to get those folks to wear a mask. But in our seventy-bed facility, most of our residents have been wearing masks um since late last year on a pretty regular basis.
Stacy, the one thing I would um tell you though about masks, with everybody wearing masks, and probably the same thing for you, Jason, is that they are gonna be watching when you change your mask, if it's soiled, if you've touched your face, if you've touched anything, because before they didn't care um as much. They weren't watching out for that as much with the masks because of the burn rate. And now they are paying more attention to making sure that, you know, if your staff is wearing masks, did they change their mask at the appropriate time? So with everybody still wearing masks, you wanna might wanna um, you know, keep that in the back of your mind also for your survey.
Yeah, Janelle, that's a, that really is a big piece and that has been what most facilities in Mesa County have been um either cited for or at least a discussion is the single use is really applicable, even when staff pull their mask down to take a drink, at that point, the state looks at that mask as needing to be replaced. And so if it's not in use around your uh covering your face and nose, at that point, it it needs to be replaced.
Wow.
I, how's everybody feeling about this discussion? I mean, I know for myself, my personal self, I feel like it's a little overwhelming with N ninety-fives and being a smaller assisted living facility and the financial burdensen of what that will look like for any of us who have to go in that direction. Uh, any input or insight from anybody?
As far as the N ninety-fives, I'm sorry, Rachel, I had a little interruption. We have a storm coming through here and lightning. So um were you talking about the N ninety-fives or the masks?
I'm talking about the N ninety-fives at a smaller assisted living level and getting fitted. There, I mean, we don't have the financial means. And I'm I'm thinking in the long term of, you know, if we have, if we do get another outbreak or if we get um and for those of you who don't know, I did have a complete outbreak last October. And, you know, I am trying to prepare in case something like this will happen for any of us actually in the future. And the N ninety-fives and getting fitted, we don't have a nurse on staff. We don't have anybody who's trained on staff. So I'm I'm talking openly to everybody out there to see what uh kind of options are, is there any additional funding through the state that maybe we need to talk to Peter about? Cause they've keep, they keep closing all these these uh services, especially with the staffing and a lot of people are still struggling with the staffing. And what does that look like with help giving us those services we need while we're getting through this transition or this next stage or next, you know, this Delta variant? What is this gonna look like? I I think that is definitely a a bigger discussion we need to have with Peter.
So yeah.
We did talk to Peter about that. We started talking about that and we explained to him that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that was in the um training that they had that they wanted us to take that had nothing to do with small assisted livings. And I was pretty blunt with him and told him, I would say that seventy-five percent of the small assisted livings went home places, don't have any N ninety-fives. And so we did, we have brought that up, we have. And so he was going to take it back and look into that to separate us out a little bit remote more from the requirements of the larger facilities compared to the smaller homes and what we can afford and what we can do. I know that may not be fair to maybe some of the larger facilities. But um, you know, we did bring that up and he is going to look, we are not nursing homes. You know, I mean, that's what we told him. A lot of those things that on that training is all about nursing homes. And I also told him mostly seventy-five percent of the people have not read all that. We don't have time.
Or can we, yeah. So I I called over eighteen places, all local hospitals in the Denver metro area. Um, and um all sorts of different resources for N ninety-fives. How we could do it, was anyone doing it? And the only place I found was National Jewish. And I did drop her email in the in the chat. Um, she, there is an OSHA questionnaire that your um employees will have to complete first and it's on an independent site. That's how they get medical clearance. So you won't know anything about what's going on with them personally. Um, it'll just be through the OSHA site. They will deem them able to wear Indian N ninety-fives or not able to wear N ninety-fives. Unfortunately, that OSHA screening alone is twenty-five thirty-five dollars. Have reached out to OSHA directly to see if like Colic could get some group um rate to make that cheaper. After they clear that document, then um you can contact National Jewish. We are looking at maybe setting up a mass fitting site um in the Denver metro area up north, down south. Um, even, you know, I don't know if she traveled to the Western Slope, but to see if we can get clinics for people to get fit tested. It becomes a little bit more affordable if you do a big huge group. However, the caveat is, is you must provide the N ninety-fives for your staff to get fitted in. Um, and so she sent me this big huge email on resources for getting in ninety-fives and maybe how we could do some group purchasing. Um, but it's very, very challenging. And so I just shared all this information with Peter Myers through the strike force. So she he knows how complicated this is for smalls. Um, I am also sent um sending it to HicPuff. Um, so that Medicaid understands that maybe they need to look at a stipend per employee for this type of um in ninety-five fit test and a stock of N ninety-fives for Medicaid providers. Um, I do, once we kind of get things set up, I think we should reach out to Innovate for Innovate providers to see if they have someone that can come do it for your staff or if they have a way to bump up your pay a little bit per staff member. Cause the bottom line is, is um we're gonna have to do it if we have suspected or an outbreak. So we somewhat need to be prepared, but I'm not gonna go invest hundreds of dollars in N ninety-fives that might not even fit an employee. So um I do know that the woman at National Jewish said that if there's some of us that are medical providers, that are nurses, LPNs, uh maybe nurse practitioners that'd be willing to go, she would she would teach us for a hundred and fifty dollars how to do the actual fit test. Um, so I think that, you know, every day we're just moving forward. But we're also telling Peter and we're also sharing the facts that we still don't believe that people that are this contagious should be in assisted living period. That, you know, um, we're we're dancing down a slippery slippery slope of being required to take care of people that um, you know, are under respiratory precautions. A lot of us are in residential homes, you know, and they take that mask off in their own personal bedroom, the heating and air conditioning. Excuse me, system can suck that stuff into and push it around the house anyway. So I'm I'm also still hoping, and I know Janet is also still hoping that maybe there's some resources so that we don't have to have these individuals stay on site if they become COVID positive.
I I have a lot of um in ninety-five masks in stock, my back stock for PPE. Um, and what's funny is that there's actually instructions on the side of the box of how to fit that mask. We've never had to use them here, but it just kind of funny to me that these came with instructions on how to fit an N ninety-five mask. Now that I'm hearing that it has to be, you know, something other than that, that we cannot do that off the instructions on the box. Um, I guess, you know, maybe I could reach out to my local health department. They have nurses there, you know? Um, maybe they'll be able to help help me do that. I don't really know how that works with the N ninety-five. I mean, will each staff member need to have ten masks fit to them personally or, you know, um, but but they do. I I got mine through direct supply and I tell you what, there there's instructions right on the box on how to fit those, but I'm sure that I need a nurse or somebody more.
Um, you, it's too legal. There's too many, we could get sued if, you know, we just don't wanna go that path, you know? I mean, you gotta tread on you, you just, you just don't wanna, we don't wanna go that direction, Stacy. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, Kristen's asking, do they not make N ninety-five masks that fit all? Um, nope. They have to be fit, tested.
So the other thing we're asking is, is during the pandemic, there is something during crisis standard that's called um a quick fit in time or something. And we are requesting that maybe small, you know, like assisted livings in general um maybe be allowed to do that.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to get someone fit tested. Um, I don't know if they're gonna approve that. It's just one of the suggestions that I've made to the strike force. Um, because it becomes very costly with N ninety-fives as well, right? Because you know, every single time again, someone touches their face, they've got to replace that. So for a quarter, you know, surgical mask, even though that adds up, he's a ninety-five, so it's six to seven dollars each. So you know, someone working an eight-hour shift or a twelve-hour shift, first of all, has to have two. Even if they don't touch their face or take them on or off, because every eight hours, you're supposed to get a new mask if you're not following crisis standards. So it could get extremely costly. I mean, for for a Medicaid provider, you could pay twenty-eight dollars a day. You could use that in PPE pretty easy.
So let's, let's just talk about the the staffing issues. I mean, as soon as you hire somebody, you get them fitted, boom, they're gone.
Yep.
Yeah. Name into that, that's for sure.
Huts. All right, well, we're five after the hour. Um, we've got some more questions and I think we'll keep working on this data. Uh, Jason, thank you for sending that document. I think we'll just send that out to everybody. Just to, as a flag, you may not have Delta in your county right now, but it's coming. So start getting ready. Um, and uh and we'll, we'll keep working on these resources. We still have the COVID resources page on the website. I think we need to do some updating there with some of these vendors and that kind of stuff. So Nicole and others, if you'll keep getting me that info, we make sure we get that out to everybody. Um, any final questions or thoughts, Nicole?
No, um, if anybody has any last minute questions, if they wanna unmute themselves or type it in the chat, that'd be great. Um, know that we are here, we're all aggressively working through um all the new challenges that are being thrown our way. Um, it doesn't seem like we we got or are getting much of a break. Um, but I think that the survey tool, first of all, will be very, very, very helpful. I encourage everyone to do it, even if it's just like anonymously. We do wanna compile that data. It's something that we know that um Tamara and Eileen can bring to the legislators. It's also something that we could use with the health department. We are also hoping that eventually if we can find a database of approved plan of corrections, maybe column members can access that database and copy and paste. Um, so you have already made um answers to deficiencies if you do get them. Um, so just please stay in touch with us. Um, and if there's anything we can do as um people start to come and contact this um enhanced infection um matters, please let us know. We're all trying to see our way through it. I feel like we're a little bit more ahead of the ball than we were during um COVID the first time, but still a lot of challenges. And please check out the Fall Conference. I mean, we are still hoping we get to have this face-to-face. It's just gonna be so exciting to actually see real people and have a soda or a glass of wine with people we haven't seen for a very long time and be together and do some healing and, you know, learn a lot and have some fun. So please look into that as well. And again, we appreciate all of you so, so much. So, so much in your support. And please let us know what else we can do.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Peter, I just wanted to make a quick, uh, I know it was mentioned to me as far as maybe doing a support group. Cause I know a lot of us, we would just love to just get vent out our frustration to a smaller kind of setting, unrecorded. Just say what we need to say.
Yeah.
Cuss at the state, do whatever we need to do.
Sure.
Um, so I think uh Calla will definitely uh talk about this and we will try and put something out there for people. So it's just a great way to, I mean, I know I could benefit from all of us, we're uh talking and being forthcoming about all the challenges we got. And sometimes it's just healing to just have a listening ear to get through this. So thank you, everybody.
Yeah, we can set that up. All right, well, we'll close it out with that. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Appreciate you all. And uh we will be in touch. Have a great week.